You're watching KPTS, Channel 8.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas, 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristi Zukovich. Welcome to the May 20th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today. We like to take this time to let you know about things going on around Sedgwick County. The first thing is to remind you that on Monday, our county offices will be closed for Memorial Day. Of course, if you do need emergency services, you can dial 911. Also to remind you, we will not have a meeting next week. We will not have a meeting the following week, on June 3rd. Next week, it's the last meeting in the month. We're always off the last meeting, the last Wednesday, but the 3rd, the commissioners have some conflicts, so we'll take a little break and let you catch up on your KPTS programming on Wednesday mornings. We'd also remind you, coming up at InTrust Bank Arena, we have Wichita Force in Action, May 23rd, and Commissioners, again, Lil Wayne, June 11th, just making sure you know. We do have a new exhibit opening this weekend at Exploration Place, and it is called Goosebumps: The Science of Fear. But Commissioners, there will be no goosebumps, no fear for you today, no quiz for you today. Instead, Commissioner Peter John has talked with our Treasurer, Linda Kazire, about a new tag that they have available, and so, Linda, come on up. She said she was gonna sit over there and not come up.
I'll let you tell them all about it.
I will. New plate, new Eisenhower plate. There is a $50 fee that goes to the Eisenhower Foundation. For all of you Eisenhower fans, not only was he a great Kansan, but he was a great resident. And of course, you will have your regular fees and taxes associated with this plate, but it's brand-new, and I always like to share our new plates with not only you guys, but our citizens. And these are available at all four of our tag office locations, and we just got 'em in.
Thank you, Linda. I think Commissioner Peter John has a few words to say.
Well, I just wanted to throw out, now, can you get those in motorcycle-sized yet? Are motorcycles coming, or are they just in the full-size, Linda?
Currently, they're just in the full-size plate, Commissioner. I've not heard of any plan for it to be a motorcycle, but if I find out, I'll sure let you know.
Okay, well, I was curious, do any of the other tags that are similar to the one that they're doing for the Eisenhower Library, Presidential Library up in Abilene, are they available in motorcycle forms, too? Do you know?
We do have a K-State motorcycle, a Standard motorcycle, and a Donate Life motorcycle.
Okay, those are the only ones on the motorcycle?
And the Veteran ones, sorry.
Okay, well, I think it's important, as we, as with the opening of the Eisenhower Airport here in town, I think it's important that this gets more attention, and let me just share that if you're wanting to take some young people up for a very educational day, the Eisenhower Family Home and Museum up in Abilene is a wonderful place to visit, and Presidential Library, they're just fabulous resource here in this state. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Linda. Commissioners, we have a full agenda this morning. We do have a proclamation this morning for EMS Week. We will have appointments of citizens to serve on boards. We have consideration of grant for com-care for services for com-care, and a consideration of grant for correction services. So Chairman Ransaw, I bet you can get the meeting underway.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Kristi.
You look so relieved that there was no quiz, you didn't have to guess.
That's the most stressful part of my week.
Well, you get a break, two weeks at least.
All right, thanks. With that, I'll call and order the regular meeting of Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for May 20th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invocation to be reserved by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Amen.
Loyal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Rule call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransaw.
Present. Next item.
Consideration of minutes, item A. Regular meeting of March 11th, 2015. All Commissioners were present.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that, well, I'm gonna first recommend that we can take both items A and B together, and I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes for March 11th and April 15th, 2015, for our meeting minutes.
Second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
Next item.
Proclamations, item C. Proclamation declaring Emergency Medical Services Week.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamation to read into the record. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the dedicated paramedics and emergency medical technicians of Sedgwick County Emergency Medical Services are committed to provide exemplary medical care and ambulance transportation to the citizens of Sedgwick County, and whereas Sedgwick County EMS is already providing life-saving care to those who need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency health And we have Scott Hadley from EMS. care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services System consists of emergency physicians,
This year is a very special year for Sedgwick County EMS, as we are 40 years EMS Strong.
emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators,
In late February 1975, we made our very first call, and by the end of that year, we had
and other healthcare professionals, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams,
responded to a little over 6,300 requests for service and transported approximately 5,400
whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing
patients with eight staffed ambulances.
education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize
Fast forward to 2015, given our current pace, we expect to respond to over 63,000 calls
the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service providers by designating Emergency
and transport 42,000 patients with 19 staffed ambulances.
Medical Services Week, now therefore be resolved that I, Richard Ransaw, Chairman of
All in all, we've responded to over 1.1 million requests for service, and we have transported
the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, May 17, 23rd, 2015, as
over 900,000 patients in the past 40 years.
Emergency Medical Services Week. The 2015 theme for EMS Week is EMS Strong.
This year's theme, EMS Strong, is what draws a special few together to do incredibly important
I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies,
work, often under difficult and chaotic circumstances, and many times with little
and activities. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I would...
This week is about recognizing and thanking the professional women and men, past and present,
I was just gonna move that we adopt the proclamation.
often under, excuse me, for their selfless contributions to EMS and to the communities
Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
they are proud to serve.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
We also need to recognize and thank those who are not on the front line, providing direct
Commissioner Howell.
care to patients, but have a profound impact on the EMS care that is delivered. The women and men who ensure our paramedics and emergency medical technicians are educated and well-trained, our logistics and support staff who ensure we have reliable fleet of ambulances, medical equipment, and supplies, those in our administrative office who ensure we are in compliance with billing rules and regulations, which maximizes our revenue generation, and all of our EMS system partners. I am humbled and blessed to serve alongside these special individuals. Last, but certainly not least, is the Board of County Commissioners. As policymakers, you have a tremendous influence on how emergency medical services are provided to our community. On behalf of all of us in EMS, I genuinely appreciate your ongoing and continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, very much. Thanks for all your paramedics and all the employees for everything they do on a daily basis.
You bet.
We greatly appreciate it. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Scott, I just wanna add my congratulations and support for EMS Strong Week. As I've said before, my family's had the occasion to rely on your services a couple of times during the latter part of my parents' life, and when you need the service, you're really grateful for it, and I'm also thankful for the high level of professionalism that all of your folks display in offering their services. So, thank you very much, and we'll celebrate this week with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next item, please.
Chairman Ransaw, we have not voted on the item.
Oh, we haven't?
No.
Let's vote. Call the vote, please.
We don't have a mover or a second either.
I thought we did. No, we've already voted on it.
I thought we...
I made the motion.
I have a motion for items... Oh, I apologize. I'm on the wrong item. That's my fault.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You're all right.
Citizen inquiries, item D. Request to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding problems facing com-care.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Cynthia A. Gardner, and the address is 1133 South Purdy, Wichita, Kansas, 67218. Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners, com-care a voice for mentally ill clients/patients. Good morning, gentlemen. Each person that I meet is a living book with a story to tell. I enjoy talking with people, and a majority of com-care clients cannot afford to take off work to come down here to these meetings because they work an hourly-paid job where they lack transportation to appear before you. They are unable to write to you because they do not have the skills to do so, or they do not feel that they can change anything. I am here to give these mental health clients/patients a voice. Hopefully, in the past two weeks, each of you has had an opportunity to look over the 59 recommendations for com-care of Sedgwick County. By implementing these changes, then we would feel empowered rather than repressed by a system that we are forced into because we live in poverty and have no choice but to go to com-care. Com-care is a broken system because the staff, especially the medical staff, is overworked. Look at the ratio of medical staff to client/patient in comparison to private practice. A five-to-eight-minute med check is unacceptable. In private practice, it is around 10 to 15 minutes. The short med check appointment results in clients feeling that their medication prescribing authority does not listen to them. The mentality, "I am the doctor, and you are just a consumer." The mentally... Clients and patients also feel over-medicated. Com-care needs to work with the clients/patients by taking a holistic approach, rather than asking, "How are you feeling today?" Why not ask something meaningful, such as, "How did you like the book that I recommended?" We need to feel as much as we can like a normal person while we face paranoia, anxiety, depression, mania, and other feelings that haunt us on a daily basis. How would you like fighting off the bugs that are crawling all over your body, or crying as you make plans for taking your own life? If you are willing to implement these recommendations, then this would start a two-way dialogue between com-care and the mental health clients/patients, as well as their friends, family, staff, and the Sedgwick County community. Here are some questions for you. Are the AEDs, automatic external defibrillators, going to be required on the patient transportation vehicles? When someone goes into cardiac arrest, they have a 10-minute window to receive intervention treatment. How do I know this? I went through EMT basic training. What are you doing to remove the clause in the contract between the county and Apple Bus Company that gives Apple Bus Company employees the right to override a qualified mental health professional on whether to put a patient in restraints? Is Apple Bus Company still being paid more when a patient, when they transport a patient in restraints? What steps are you taking concerning the recommendations? Have you discussed these recommendations with com-care leadership? This envelope that we're giving to KWCH, Channel 12 News, contains a letter to the Sedgwick County, contains a letter to the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners that includes emails, letters, and other supporting documentation that proves that Ms. Cook not only knowing about, but endorsing the use of steel handcuffs, leg irons, and shackles while transporting psychiatric patients from Wichita, Kansas, for a three-hour ride to Oswinomi, Kansas, where the state hospital psychiatric hospital, one of the state psychiatric hospitals is located. This happened to hundreds of patients before an advocate and attorney intervened. By the Board continuing to employ Ms. Cook, then you are sending the message that mentally ill individuals are of little value, that their opinions do not matter, and that Ms. Cook's behavior is acceptable and even encouraged by the majority of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Or motions?
I'll move to receive and file these remarks.
I'll second that. I will say that we have instructed the staff to address and respond to each of those 59 issues that we were given, and we're in the process of doing that. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item.
Appointments, item E. Resolution appointing Jeff Black to the newly re-established Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals.
Commissioners, Mike Papunak, Acting County Counselor. This resolution is for an appointment for the newly-created Board of Zoning Appeals that was adopted last month, and this is appointing Mr. Black to this board. The first appointments for this board are gonna be staggered as you provided in the resolution, and I believe his appointment will initially be for a three-year term. So, we'd ask that you approve the resolution.
EF and G are all three to the same board. Could we take those at the same time?
Yes, you can.
Okay. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the appointments described in EF and J, which would be Mr. Jeff Black, Mr. John McKay, and Mr. Bill Johnson.
EF and G.
I'm sorry. What did I say?
J. EF and G, well, I will second that motion, then. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item.
Appointments, item E. Resolution appointing Jeff Black to the newly re-established Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals.
Commissioners, Mike Papunak, Acting County Counselor. This resolution is for an appointment for the newly-created Board of Zoning Appeals that was adopted last month, and this is appointing Mr. Black to this board. The first appointments for this board are gonna be staggered as you provided in the resolution, and I believe his appointment will initially be for a three-year term. So, we'd ask that you approve the resolution.
EF and G are all three to the same board. Could we take those at the same time?
Yes, you can.
Okay. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the appointments described in EF and J, which would be Mr. Jeff Black, Mr. John McKay, and Mr. Bill Johnson.
EF and G.
I'm sorry. What did I say?
J. EF and G, well, I will second that motion, then. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. And I know Jeff is here. I don't believe any of the others are.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals, 4th Commission District, so help me God.
I will, I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I appreciate your faith in me and by appointing me, and I'm happy to serve. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. And Madam Clerk, next item.
Item H. Resolution reappointing Trevor Leachdi to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Commissioners, Mike Papunak, Acting County Counselor, again. This is Commissioner Unruh's appointment to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board of Trevor Leachdi, and would ask that you approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution appointing Preeva Leachdi to the Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
Is Preeva here today?
She is not.
Okay, cool. Get her sworn in at a different time, then. Next item, please.
Resolutions appointing, or item I. Resolutions appointing and reappointing members as defined below to the Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Commissioners, Mike Papunak, Acting County Counselor. This resolution contains several appointments in it to the Fire Board, Fire Code Board of Appeals. Appoints Mr. Greg Willhite, reappoints Tim LeBlanc, oh, reappoints Greg Willhite, reappoints Tim LeBlanc, appointing Ray Frederick, appointing Christine Bruner, and reappointing Randall Coonrod. Ask that you, resolutions in proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
What's the will of the board?
I'll move that we approve those resolutions for those five individuals.
I have a second.
We have a motion in second. Please no discussion. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Planning Department, item J. Zone change from RR Rural Residential to LI Limited Industrial on property located one-half mile west of North 263rd Street West, and on the north side of West 61st Street North.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Schlegel, Metropolitan Area Planning Department. The request before you today is for limited industrial zoning on the parcel which is pointed to by the arrow on the graphic before you now. That parcel is just shy of an acre in size, located along West 61st Street North, west of the city of Andale. It's currently zoned rural residential, as you can see on the zoning graphic before you, and it's developed with two metal buildings which have been used since 1976 as a welding or machine shop. It's about, those buildings constitute about 8,200 square feet of floor area, and this business employs four full-time and up to five part-time employees. Since it was established before the creation of countywide zoning in 1985, it is a legally non-conforming use of the property, although not permitted by the rural residential zoning classification. The applicant wants to expand the machine shop beyond the current parcel, which is this, to include this additional approximately half-acre just to the north, and it's a portion of property, larger property, that he already owns. So, in order to do that, what we've advised the applicant is they would have to have a limited industrial zoning classification, and that's why this item is before you today. The item was heard by the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission at its meeting on April 16th. There was no one else other than the applicant there to speak regarding the request, and the MAPC approved the request unanimously, subject to two conditions, which would be part of a protective overlay. In addition, the Andale Planning Commission heard this item on April 8th, and no one other than the applicant was present to speak on this request, and they also unanimously recommended approval, subject to the protective overlay. And staff has not received any protests or any complaints about this request from any of the neighboring property owners. So, with that, the recommendation is that you adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and approve this request. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, just a couple, well, maybe just one quick question. The protective overlay, is that the area in red that's...
It would apply to the entire application area outlined in red. So, it'd be about just a little over acre and a half altogether.
Okay. I just wanted to get that clarified and make sure that was part of the record in terms of what exactly was covered.
This time, I'd like to ask if anyone in the public would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Commissioner Peter John?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, approve the zone change subject to protective overlay number 297, and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution.
Second hand. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next item.
New business, item K. Public hearing to consider petitions from landowners James D. and Tiffany D. Dornbusch, Todd and Janet K. Leicher, Dave and Christie L. Reif, and Douglas M. Weineger for the inclusion of their properties within the boundaries of the Sedgwick County Fire District Number One.
Commissioners, Mike Papunak, Acting County Counselor. You have before you today a resolution which will be altering Fire District Number One by allowing four separate landowners to be included in the Fire District. These landowners have filed a petition to join the Fire District. The petitioners are James D. and Tiffany D. Dornbusch, who live at 14230 West 70th Circle North in Colwich, Kansas; Todd and Janet K. Leicher, 14201 West 70th Circle North, Colwich, Kansas; David A. and Christie L. Reif, 7025 North 142nd Street West, Colwich; and Douglas M. Weineger at 13360 West 53rd Street North in Mays, Kansas. These petitions were signed and submitted to the court, or the county clerk. You can see any of these properties on the map. Because these circles are three-mile circles radius of the different property owners, and if these circles include areas that are involved with cities, and you can see the city of Mays is within the three-mile radius, which is called by statute a fringe area, and city of Wichita comes into one, and of course, the city of Colwich, we are required to give notice to the various cities that we are alterating this special district. And as a result of that, you're gonna have to have a four-member vote on this, on this issue, because if we are imposing on a city's fringe area, we have to have a three-quarter vote, which would be four Commissioners. You also have various considerations, because these are in a fringe area, that you have to take into consideration when deciding whether or not to allow these landowners to come into the Fire District. Among the considerations, you look at the size and population of each city, the city's growth in population, business, and industry during the past 10 years, the extension of boundaries during the last 10 years, the probability of growth toward the territory during the ensuing 10 years, taking into consideration natural barriers and other reasons which might influence growth toward the territory, five, the willingness of the city to annex the territory and its ability to provide city services in case of annexation, and six, the general effect upon the entire community. All of these and other considerations having to do with the overall orderly and economic development of the area, and to prevent an unreasonable multiplicity of independent, municipal, and special... and special district governments. Obviously, this statute deals more when you're creating large districts and doesn't, isn't as relevant when you just have a single property owner, or four separate single property owners like we have in this particular case. But, anyway, the recommended action today is to open the public hearing, accept public comment, close the hearing, and we, if you adopt the, we recommend that you adopt the resolution. If so, it'll be published for two consecutive weeks in the county newspaper, and then there's a 30-day protest period in which some of the landowners can change their mind and, and petition to withdraw from, from the district within that day, that period. Deputy Chief Larry Tagney is here. If you have any operations questions relating to servicing these areas, and be happy to answer any questions as well.
Are there any questions from Commissioners before I open the public hearing? Commissioner Peter John?
Mike, when you said that certain people could withdraw during that 30-day period, is that limited to the, to the four, owners of the four parcels that are before us today, or is it some other group when you say that people can withdraw?
Well, the way the statute is written, and it's not as archly written as it could be, it, it deals more when you have a large area, like we had the city of Eastborough pulled out of the Fire District a number of years ago. If you had a certain number of citizens in Eastborough that petitioned to get into the Fire District, and then after your action, another group of citizens in the same area petitioned to get out at 19%, then that would, that would nullify your action. It doesn't work as well when you're talking about individual families, because essentially what you have is a couple that wants to be in the Fire District, and then the statute says if 19% of that couple wants to get act out, then they can petition to pull out, and then they'll be out of the Fire District within that 30-day protest period. Doesn't really work smoothly for the kinds of alterations to the district that we do, but these happen every year and just minor adjustments. Sometimes we have families that want out of the Fire District, sometimes we want them to petition in, and in this, this case, we have four families wanting to petition into the district.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing with respect to this issue, and, and ask if there's any, anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this issue, either for or against. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing at this time. Commissioners, are there any further questions or discussion? What's the will of the Board? Commissioner Peter John?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the resolution and instruct the county clerk to publish that resolution according to law, state law.
Second half.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to take an off-agenda item, I believe. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we take up an item entitled a resolution granting the Chairman of the County Commission authority to provide notice to the Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition and the City of Wichita of its intent to terminate agreement.
Second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hold, Assistant County Manager. The Board of County Commissioners, as you know, entered into the funding agreement with the Great Wichita Economic Development Coalition, also referred to as GWDC, and the city of Wichita on 11th day of December 2013 to provide certain levels of funding for the years 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Paragraph 12 of the agreement states that either party may terminate the agreement by giving written notice to the other party by June 1 of each year, with the termination becoming effective January 1 of the following year. In order for the county to address the funding of GWDC as part of the county's yearly budget process, which is not complete until early August of each year, you approved at your meeting last week an amendment to the funding agreement between Sedgwick County, the city of Wichita, and GWDC to change the date for the termination notice from June 1 to September 1 of any year, with termination being effective January 1 of the following year. To become effective, the amendment to the agreement you passed last week required approval by GWDC and the city of Wichita. Again, this would allow the funding of GWDC as part of the county's yearly budget process, which starts in February each year, but is not completed until the second week of August thereabout each year. At yesterday's city council meeting, the council voted 6-1 against a change in the agreement. As such, this makes the action that you took last week, it nullifies the action you took last week with respect to the GWDC agreement. So, the action before you today is a resolution granting the Chairman of the County Commission authority to provide notice to the Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition and the city of Wichita of its intent to terminate the agreement. Again, on your agenda, the recommended action is adopt the resolution and authorize the Chairman to sign the letters of intent to terminate funding agreement to be delivered no later than June 1, 2015.
Thank you, Ron. First, I'll start off by asking if anyone from the public would like to speak on this
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commission members, County Manager, Jeff Fleur, 507 East Douglas Avenue. I'm just here to ask you to respectfully request that you not approve this item this morning. A lot of things that we're working on in the community as a whole, one in particular with the partnership, Great Wichita Partnership, and alignment of working with GWDC, working with Downtown Development Corp., other initiatives of the partnership through Business Education Alliance, Entrepreneurship Task Force, is really a concerted effort to have a collective, cohesive move, if you will, for economic development in our city. Earlier this week, we saw a report coming out of WSU in regard to our growth, and that it's not hitting the forecast that they thought it would be. You know, in times like this, we need to invest in ourselves and move forward, and so I just wanted to come before you, as we're kind of aligning and working on this initiative to get started with the Great Wichita Partnership, that you continue to be a partner in that capacity as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else?
Jeff? Yesterday, I tried to catch the city council meetings as much as I could on TV, had a lot of meetings conflicted up here. Did you or anyone with the partnership testify at the city council meeting yesterday?
No, we, we did not testify at yesterday's council meeting. We were working with both parties, going with, working with the county and the city on this, and so we had conversations with all of our partners, yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure and wanted to get that information. Thank you.
Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lillu, Wichita. I wish you would not do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll reserve comments for the bench. I'll say we're taking this off agenda item because, because we have to, we're kind of, hands are being, well, because of the city's councils. We thought we had an agreement to postpone this till September 1st to work through these issues and see exactly what our funding level would be, et cetera, but they didn't want to do that, so this is our option to pervert, it gives notice and allows us to work through our budget cycle, decide exactly what we're going to do in the future. I want to make this very clear that despite what some people may say, this does not mean that we're not actively engaged or involved in the process, and that we don't want to partner with people and work with people. The symptom matter is that we need to evaluate where we're at as far as our budget for a variety of reasons, and we had asked for some time to work through that, and GWDC did agree to do that, which I was grateful for, but this leaves us really no alternative, but this is just a small bump in the road as far as I'm concerned. We're committed to working with GWDC and having ongoing conversations, and we'll get to that point from a practical standpoint. This really doesn't change where we'll, where we'll end up, so that's why it's kind of surprising that the city of Wichita took the actions that they did, but in, but it is necessary because of that vote yesterday, but we were committed to moving on and continuing to partner with people in the future. We're all concerned about jobs and economic development, and this does not end our involvement in that in any way, shape, or form. So, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask the question to the county counselor. Our action today, should we approve this resolution today? Would this in any way impact Wichita city's relationship with GWDC and their agreement, their five-year funding agreement that they're currently under? Does this affect them in any way?
Commissioner Mike Papunak, County Counselor, I think if your question is, does this action today terminate the three-party agreement? I mean, it terminates it in the form that it is right now. Obviously, the city could keep honoring that agreement if they wanted to, or they could adopt, they could ratify that, adopt their own separate agreement, but as far as the three-party agreement that exists today, by giving this termination, that agreement will terminate January 1.
So, they could essentially make a choice to honor that, but contractually, get right down to the technical requirements or obligation that they would have, this doesn't, they would essentially, this would, this would essentially free them as well. Our action would, would nullify their agreement, so to speak. They could, they could make it clear that they would want to continue that if they want to, or establish new agreement, or whatever they wanted to do. It's up to them.
Yeah, I wouldn't presume to represent them, but GWDC could contend that they're bound by the agreement if they don't give notice by Jan, by June 1, too, but the nature of this three-party agreement would certainly be terminated. From the county's perspective.
Mr. Chairman, if you please, I'd like to just make a couple comments here, and that is, I'm, I am very disappointed that the city of Wichita took the action that they did yesterday. We have worked with the three organizations that had funding agreements in place. I think we initially had the opportunity to just terminate those funding agreements, and we compromised. We found a solution, I think, that was agreeable to, to both parties, GWDC and the county. I think we're, we're together in saying that the change in the termination date in that, that agreement just made sense to, to move it to the part of the calendar that's after the budget cycle, gives us our options, and so the other two organizations embraced the idea as well, and, and we have no problem with them. They have agreed to that change, and in fact, even praised the county commission for making this decision. So, it was, it was surprising yesterday to find that Wichita made the choice that they did, and I think it puts us in a position where we have only one option really left if we want to actually have all of our options on the table. I would say that we have had a good partnership with GWDC in the past. The funding is relatively small compared to the budget. I believe they have done some, some good things in our community, and this is not a judgment on their organization in any way, but this is really about our budget process and our ability to get things back on the table. I would not be surprised if, if a similar agreement was drafted up and, and would be agreed to later this year. I would not be surprised at that at all, but, but that's not a discussion for today, that's for the future. I would say I'm, I'm personally committed to economic development. I think many of my colleagues are as well. That might take different forms. We're certainly going to have a good discussion going forward on what that means, but it would have been better, in my opinion, for Wichita to approve the, the date change, and it's surprising to me that they would take the action that they did, but nevertheless, we are now left with one less option, so I would support the resolution and today to terminate that agreement, let us get through the budget cycle, and then we will take up that discussion later this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to begin by saying some kind words about our colleagues across the street, because this wasn't a surprise to me, and I knew that there was going to be an effort yesterday by members of the city council to take the actions that they took, and even if we disagree on some things, I think it's important that we do try and communicate, and I want to give a public statement of appreciation to the mayor and vice mayor for meeting with the chairman and myself as the chair pro tem last Wednesday so that we could discuss some issues. I believe this is the first time since sometime during 2014 that the top two county officials have met with the top two city officials, and I think that's very important to try and work to discover opportunities to improve local government in our county and work on joint issues. I want to also provide some commendation to the folks at GWEDEC or the Greater Wichita Partnership. I'm not sure exactly when the transition point occurs, but, but their willingness to cooperate with the county to try and work through our budget challenges, because I, I think, in my understanding of the agreement, we were going to have time between now and the end of the year, and we could put another agreement back in place if we take this action today to get out of the problems that we had with three organizations, and GWEDEC was one of the three, and fortunately, we were able to resolve two of those three, but, you know, it's, it, it is a, I think it was very unfortunate what the city council did yesterday, and we should be working to wear, to narrow and not widen Central Avenue between Main Street and Waco. I think widening Central hurts instead of helps strengthen local government in Sedgwick County, and I think that's a goal that I'm certainly committed to. And Sedgwick County is committed to economic development. We've had a past commitment, I think there's a present commitment, a future commitment, and this is a commitment with money, not just with rhetoric. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, I believe the figure roughly is about 3.4 million that Sedgwick County is paying on principal and interest for Wichita area Technical College NCAT, which provides workforce training. Last year, this commission unanimously voted to help WSU proceed with their innovation campus, and while we've been divided somewhat on the timing, there was unanimous vote for proceeding, and that's a very important economic development effort going forward. Now, we're looking at a new approach with the Greater Wichita Partnership, and I agree that the past, we needed to do some things to try and strengthen it, and obviously, some steps we took last year is part of it. But part of the reason why I think we need to go forward is due to issues that haven't gotten the attention that I think they deserve, and some of it's happening literally this week. While there was some discussion about the fiscal shortfall of about $10 million that county staff presented to us earlier this year, yesterday, my understanding is that the Senate Tax Committee put in place into House Bill 2109 provisions that would dramatically reduce the automobile property tax revenues that local governments have been, been able to receive. Now, this was originally, there was, there was an original Senate bill, and I just got the analysis of it yesterday in terms of Senate Bill 259, that my understanding has been included in this new House bill in the Senate, and the impact on Sedgwick County, according to the figures I've gotten, if it was fully implemented, would be a $7 million reduction in Sedgwick County property taxes. But it would also include cities, too, and I'm going to share this with my colleagues, because we all have municipals, municipalities in our districts, and the city of Wichita, we all have a part of the city of Wichita, and the information I've received indicates that the city of Wichita would lose over 5.7 million on, in Senate Bill 259, once it's fully put in place. The city of Hayesville would lose $163,000 a year. Derby would lose 507,000. Bel Air would lose 132,000. Park City would lose 118,000. So, I'm pointing this out because this is an identified concern that Sedgwick County has to deal with, and that's part of the reason we've sent out notices to- And that's part of the reason we've sent out notices to 17 different entities concerning problems we have with the budget challenges going forward. In addition to that, this is the first year of legislation that was enacted in 2014 that begins phasing out the mortgage registration fee that had been a county revenue and will have a significant impact. But these are the known changes. Well, one's fully known in terms of the mortgage registration fee reduction. We're not sure what the legislature will come up with, if House Bill 2109 will go into place, and how soon the impact could be. But this is how much it could be with the information. This is the best estimate I have in front of me at this point in time. So we're, we have also what could pop up that we don't know about yet. And from my talking with folks up at Topeka, I'm not really sure that anybody up there knows any more than I know, which is one of the reasons why we went through this process for the letters. So I'm not happy with having to take this action today. I think it is unfortunate that what happened at the city yesterday and what happened at the state yesterday, too, is causing us serious and significant fiscal challenges going forward. So reluctantly, I am going to be supporting this motion. But with the full knowledge that with the timing that we have, we can get another agreement in place between now and the end of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I will not be supporting the motion to terminate this agreement, in a large part because of the comments that were just made by Mr. Flure about the progress that we have made and the potential that's directly in front of us. I think it's important that we maintain our partnership with the city of Wichita and with the new Wichita Partnership and with the Chamber of Commerce. It's important, I think, that we maintain that because as we consider economic development, whether it's a local company or whether it's someone we're trying to recruit to this area, a sense of community unity and a sense of partnership in trying to go forward with these economic development initiatives are very important. The GWDC, Wichita Partnership, I think, needs to be funded because that, at the very base level, provides a very important function as being the recruiter, the welcoming committee, the host for different folks to come and visit our community. At the very base function, that has to be taken care of, and that requires financial resources to do that. You know, whether or not we get involved in any other economic development incentives or not, that function needs to be taken care of, and it requires funding. So that's kind of the fundamental reason. I think that this partnership that we have is maybe better described as a collaboration, which I think it means that's a long-term relationship that's mutually beneficial to the partners. And so we need to be collaborative even helpful. In that position, as one of the partners and collaborators, I think that we have experience that these funding contracts we have, when we're required to make a modification, our partners have been willingly agreeable to that. When we've had to make a change, they've said, all right, we understand your situation. We're willing to modify our budget. We're willing to make a change. Those details, you know, I'm not at all embarrassed to go back and say, hey, we can't do it this year. We've got to make a change. Something's got to happen. I don't think, I don't think that we have to terminate our contract in order to depend upon the trust we have and the mutual respect we have for one another and the cooperation we have under the terms of this agreement. I grant you that maybe in the most technical legal sense, we need to do it on a certain date because that's the date we have to do it. But I also know that breaking contracts, from my business experience, is a really significant action to take. It's really important. It has to do with not only situation, but it has to do with your commitment or with my commitment, my integrity to keep a contractual relationship. And especially in light of the fact that we've had times, we've had to go to our partners and say, hey, we're not able to fully fund our commitment. We need to make a modification. Our partners have worked with us. So I think, I think that we need to keep this contract in place. If when we get a recommended budget, we see that we have to make some significant changes, then we go to our partners and say, help us out. Let's work together. We're all part of this community, and let's make it work. And I think that's what we have done and can do. And for those reasons, I won't be supportive of the motion. That's all I have.
Commissioner Norton?
I'm probably not going to support the motion either. I'm very sad that we've taken some of the actions we've taken recently. I'm a real believer that when you work in a community and you collaborate and you have partners, that you have trust. And I don't want to go down the path of start becoming a trust buster with our community. I think it's important that we stay engaged, and this just separates us from the pack. I also think that we're using the budget as a smokescreen to get done some things that are on the checklist. We've already gotten rid of our relationship with NACO, which is the National Association of Counties. I was very active in that, in several steering committees. And I'm sad that I can't be active and learn about health and mental health and some other things that I was active in. We're no longer a part of REAP. Who vote today will be out of GWDC. We've sent letters to Project Access, the Child Advocacy Center, Exploration Place, the River Festival, the Zoo. We're looking at com care and some privatization kinds of projects. All of these things have been enumerated or on a checklist, or on a list. They've been notified. And to me, that starts to unravel many of the partnerships, many of the good things that I've worked really hard to integrate into our community and make a part of the fabric of our civilization. And I'm very sad that we're starting down this path. Anybody that thinks that this is just an isolated incident, that we want to talk about economic development, is very confused and doesn't understand what's happening in our community right now. And I would implore us not to go down this path today. It may be a foregone conclusion. I was at the very first meeting of GWDC as we started to form that partnership and think about the greater good that a collaboration would do. Cheryl Wolford's here. I remember sitting next to her and us writing on a napkin what we thought we would try to accomplish with this partnership. We've had ups and downs, but so has the community. But this is not the time, nor the place, nor the avenue to dissolve that partnership. I don't think it makes good sense, as many of the really good business leaders in our community are embarking on the next phase of the partnership. And this is not the time to disintegrate that partnership and to make Central Avenue so wide that we never close that gap again. So I will not be supportive of this. I don't think it makes good sense. We need to honor our partnership. And we haven't gotten through the budget yet, and I don't believe we're in a crisis. I've seen crisis since I've been here, and we're not in one right now. We don't need to overreact by starting to eliminate the good things in our community that we've done over the years. That's all I have with you, Chairman.
Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for a second bite at the apple here. I want to respond to some of the comments some of my colleagues have already articulated this morning. Respect to Commissioner Peter John's comments about the legislature, those are real. I generated a graph just to illustrate the point. I'm not going to share that right now. But if you look at the property tax revenue for Sedgwick County, first of all, it's a small part of our overall budget. We don't have total discretion of the entire budget. We actually have the greatest, excuse me, the greatest, excuse me. We have the greatest discretion over the property tax revenues in funds like the funds for GWDC. And unfortunately, the property tax revenues have been very, very flat. In fact, the last five years, between 2010 to 2014, it's about a $1 million variation up and down. It's been very, very flat. Over that same period of time, there's been reductions of revenue from the state or actually legislative changes that have limited our ability to actually generate revenue within the county, which is what we're talking about today with Senate Bill 259 or potentially House Bill 2109, limiting the ability for Sedgwick County to generate revenue for our own operations. So the job forecast is flat. Revenue in property tax has been flat. We've had increasing pressures. In fact, there was a lot of spending that happened last December that reduced our ending balance quite a lot and made this budget issue, I think, more critical moving forward. Mr. Flure, would you be willing to answer a question for me? Okay. And as it comes to the podium, I'd like to just relate to the audience that Mr. Flure and myself and Mr. Jeff Turner also, we met together in my office and discussed this entire issue recently. And as you in my office, one of the comments, I believe that you and Mr. Turner made, to me, was essentially something like this. You said, we understand the budget pressures you're under. We are sympathetic to that problem, and we understand you have some difficult decisions ahead. We understand you may have to make some difficult decisions, and we support whatever you have to do with respect to our agreement, our funding, our arrangement, whatever. We want to make sure you have a seat at the table. That's the most important thing to us. We understand it's difficult, and we understand you may have to make a difficult decision that we would not choose ourselves. However, we understand. And do whatever you have to do. We want you to remain at the table and have a seat at the table. Is that correct? Can you please relate that conversation to us?
We believe that it's important for our public partners to be at the table as we work on economic development. There is a very important role that the private sector has. There's a very important role for the public sector. And so we do continue to believe that it's important that the public sector be in partnership as we move this city forward. And we understand budget concerns, but we also understand the importance of investing in ourselves, because those are those times where we really have to bunker down and move forward. And so what we would love to be able to do is preserve the relationship in its entirety because it is important that we continue to move forward, not only from what we do together as policy or projects, but also in how we really enable these organizations to really fulfill the missions they're set out to do.
So yes or no? If we have to, if we have a budget shortfall, would you rather have us raise taxes to fill that shortfall, or would you rather have us rebalance our budget by putting everything on the table?
That's not a comment that I could respond to, sir. I'm a staff that represents the private sector, and that would certainly have to be a discussion with that group.
Okay. Anyway, I just want to be very clear with our message today, and that's all I have with you, Mr. Flure. Thank you very much. And I was appreciative of the conversation we had in my office. I think it was spot on. And if I could relate and summarize what was said, was that we understand the problem we have and that whatever decision was made, they would be supportive of that, knowing that we're partners with them. We agree with them. The economic development's important. Creating jobs is important. We have a longstanding relationship with each other. It's not going to change regardless of this decision today. We are invested. We have been invested. In fact, let me just make a point of clarity here. This is about 2016 funding and beyond. It has nothing to do with 2015 funding. That funding's already set in stone. But giving us the ability to make changes in the future if we need to is really what this is all about. Has nothing to do with our judgment or our support for or against any of these economic initiatives, economic development initiatives that are already in place. This has no, this is no bearing on that whatsoever. It simply puts things back on the table. One of my, Commissioner Andrew, you made a comment that our partners are willing and agreeable and have worked with us. I would argue that that's not true. Wichita's one of our partners in this agreement, and they said no. We asked them to change the date, and they disagreed, which is why we have this issue before us right now. Had they made the right decision to change the date in the contract, we would have a contract moving forward. The reason we're here right now is because they chose not to let that happen. My opinion, they made the choice to widen Central yesterday. And that's not, that was not the best decision for us to collaborate with them as partners. A partnership is two or more parties. And I expect we'll have a partnership with GWDC and other economic development organizations in our community as we move forward, whether we agree completely with Wichita and how that's done and would be a three-way partnership or two-way partnership. That's to be seen yet. But anyway, unfortunately, they're not willing to work with us. And that's the point I would make right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to first by expressing my appreciation to the folks who came and spoke to us today, as well as my colleagues' comments here, because I think it's important. And Commissioner Howell mentioned an item that I should have included in my earlier comments, and that is, there is one other option on the table. I mean, if the state cuts our revenues and our revenue projections don't come in with some increases, the option is there to raise taxes. In the past, majority of this commission, sometimes even a unanimous commission, has voted to raise property taxes. Now, my assessment is that I don't think there's a majority of this commission to raise property taxes. I was certainly not elected by my constituents to raise the middle of the end. I won't be supporting that going, that option going forward. But that is an option that's out there, and maybe it's an option some legislators want us to be placed in that position, maybe placing other local units in that position, too. But raising taxes in this time with this economy and our efforts to try and strengthen our economic development efforts, I think, would be a hindrance. And we do have time to work this out between now and the end of the year. But that is an option that's out on the table. And for my colleagues who might have a differing view than I have on raising taxes, that can be a continuing discussion as we get closer to the budget end. And I'd be remiss if I did not include that that's certainly an option to, for, when it comes to the level of county spending that we have going forward. Because the 17 groups that received letters that the county has been funding, those 17 groups are funded with property taxes almost entirely. I think, I think they're almost 100%. And so that restricts where that revenue is going to come from for any funding we can do in those areas. And I think that's important to include on the record today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know where to start here. Number one, there's nobody on this commission that I can think of who's even thought about raising taxes, or that's even on the, even on our landscape at all. Our staff has not given us any information or indication that we've got a situation where we should even consider that. Matter of fact, our staff has not yet given us a recommended budget that we are, I think perhaps part of this issue is the result of the fact we're getting ahead of our budgeting process. In previous years, when we've had the potential for a budget shortfall, as demonstrated in our February planning retreat, by the time we get to the budget recommendation time, that is essentially been managed through our, through our management team and our finance department to compensate for all that, where we don't have that deficit. And I think before we start making decisions now that, in my mind, might be detrimental in our community, we should wait for that process to work and wait on the recommended budget. That's one thought that comes to my mind as we have this discussion. Another thought that comes to my mind has to do basically with our discussion here about the potential challenges and... about the potential challenges and damage the state might do to us by their actions, which it seems like the state legislature in the last few years has been picking on local governments between the mortgage registration fee, which is, when it's fully implemented, is going to be several million dollars. We can go back several years to demand transfers. That's getting to be a little bit of a tired argument, but we're not being supported with that. We're being cut in other areas. And now even our local senate representative, one of them from our own county, is implementing legislation that you all described that's going to bring tremendous impact to our county revenues. I don't understand that. I also haven't seen any information from our lobbyist on what he's doing lobbying on that. I don't know if those of you have a close relationship to our legislative delegation, if we've been trying to make an effort to stop that. I mean, maybe that's where we ought to be emphasizing something. How can we turn that around? I don't know if our lobbyist has done it. I know Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Peter John, and Commissioner, you all have been pretty involved up there. I don't know if you're working on that particular issue or not, but we need to have a concentrated effort to let those folks know how detrimental that's going to be, not to just our core functions, but also to our valuable community partnerships. Third thought that comes to my mind is, I recall when a group of us went to Dallas to talk to the folks at Southwest Airlines, trying to convince them that this is a good community for them to serve. And a bunch of us sitting around the table, the governor was there, we had, our federal delegation was there, and folks from the city and Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Kelly, the CEO of Southwest Airlines, when he got up to speak, one of the first things he said was, "Let me tell you, we know more about Wichita, Kansas than you know about yourselves." And that has always stuck with me, that people who are thinking about investing in our community, site selectors, different people who are potential recruits to our economic environment, they do their homework. They know what's going on here. They know the personalities, and they know the conversations we have at the Sedgwick County Commissioners' bench. And so all the things we say, I mean, I don't think we should be intimidated by that, but I think that we need to have that in our thinking, that as we have conversations and make comments about our city council partners, when we make comments about the economic development agencies, when we take positions that are not taking us forward, different folks know that. They know our personality. And so I think the action we're contemplating today can have a significant impact, a significant piece of how they view us. And so as much as anything, what it's going to look like to potential people there, how we're talking and what we're doing, I think, is really important. And I think that we should affirm and go forward with our partnerships. And if we have an issue, we go back to them and have them, talk to them, we'll work it out, rather than just terminate the contract. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Well, let me say that our partnership with all of these entities will continue in the future. That's not ending today. We're just saying that we need to evaluate our spending, and at this point, we can't tell anyone what's going to happen in the future. And as has been stated, we gave notice to 17 different organizations, 14 of them by letter. Two of them agreed to extensions in the contract. It gives us till September 1st to iron things out. We thought we had an agreement with GWDC, but the city didn't want to participate and partner in that decision, and so we're kind of backed into a corner. The fact of the matter is, no one has said, I've never said we are in a crisis here. People keep bringing up that word. I guess it's good for political rhetoric, but the fact of the matter is, I've never said we're in a crisis. But there is the reality of the situation, that we face a $10 million deficit and some decisions that could be made into, could exacerbate that problem. So we have a choice. We can stick our head in the sand and pretend nothing's going on, or we can be proactive, notify everyone that we partner with and say, "Hey, there may be some changes up ahead. Work to try and resolve those," which we will do, because if we don't address them now, then we will find ourselves in a crisis. So it's not fun. Nobody likes to make changes or cut funding or change funding to anybody. But the fact of the matter is, that's the new normal. We can't spend money like we have in the past. We have reevaluated our memberships in a few organizations that weren't providing any tremendous value for this community, so we reallocate those dollars to something else. That's something that has to be done on an ongoing basis. And as I said, it's not fun. We don't enjoy it. But I think it's important that we be proactive, be honest with everyone that we partner with, say there are some challenges ahead, and let's try to address those. This is part of it. Unfortunately, I don't like where we're at today either, but we were put into a corner, basically. We thought we had a better solution, but we'll move forward. This is just a temporary setback, so to speak. We'll reevaluate. We'll have negotiations. We'll move forward. And as Commissioner Peter John said, the county invests millions of dollars a year into our community in the name of economic development, and some people just want to dismiss that, forget about that, and act like the sky is falling today, and it's not. We'll move forward. Our partnerships will continue, and we'll be actively engaged in economic development. I have no doubt about that. At this point, we don't have a motion, do we?
We do not.
What is the will of the Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution, authorize the chairman to sign the letters of intent to terminate funding agreement to be delivered no later than June 1st, 2015.
Second?
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye. Motion passes 3-2. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, a resolution adopting the International Residential Code published by the International Code Council 2012 edition and amending, deleting, and supplementing various provisions of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Building and Trade Code.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, Director of the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, for the record. Last month, at the April 22 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, I presented information regarding the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code along with suggested local amendments to that particular code. A public hearing was allowed at that meeting. Since the meeting last month, there has been internal staff discussion concerning two of the amendments within the proposed resolution that we reached out and also discussed with local contractors and builders. The first issue dealt with Section 23 of the resolution, which is the issue concerning requirement of carbon monoxide detectors in existing homes. After discussion with local builders and communication with the International Code Council staff, our local staff recommends, at least for this code cycle adoption, that Wichita-Sedgwick County delete Section 3, excuse me, R 315.3 of the proposed residential code. This would remove the proposed government-mandated requirement of carbon monoxide detectors in existing homes. We will continue to research this issue before the next code cycle is adopted. Also, it is recommended to keep R 315.1 in place, which requires carbon monoxide detector installation into brand-new homes being built. The second issue revisited since last month's public hearing meeting concerned the deregulation of hoop houses for residential properties. As you recall, hoop houses are a variety of small greenhouse structures which use solar power to grow plants. It is a staff recommendation that we add Section 32 to the group of local amendments, which removes previous building code regulation concerning hoop houses. In the time period since April 22, the commission meeting on that date, MABCD staff has not heard anything from contractors or the general public concerning the proposed code adoption. The Wichita Area Builders Association and the Board of Code Standards and Appeals Advisory Board both support the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code, along with the local amendment in today's resolution. At this time, staff recommends adoption of the code and the accompanying amendments. Mr. Bud Led is here with me today, and we're glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. At this point, I'd like, I know you've had lots of public discussion, but I'd like to open this up and see if anyone from the public would like to speak on this item as well.
Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu, Wichita. And I apologize to Commissioner Jim Howell. When he brought up some questions concerning the carbon monoxide detectors, he made some good points. He wanted more information, and I sharply criticized him for putting concerns about money over safety. I was wrong. You know, you identified these alarms don't last that long. We've learned that it doesn't have the immediacy need that we have from the smoke alarms. So I apologize to you. You were right. I was wrong. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Lonnie, I just want to say thank you for coming up to the mic and speaking with us about this. And you've been a good community partner, if you will, on bringing issues to our understanding as well. I think our relationship with you has been tremendous, and I appreciate your perspective. And no offense taken, I appreciate the dialogue you and I continue to have on this and other issues. I think that you're a good man, and I appreciate your opinion on these things, so keep it up. It's no problem. Just work together respectfully, and it's okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this item? Seeing none? Commissioners, any questions or comments? What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the resolution.
Second?
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to, I guess, make a comment about this very issue that Lonnie Wright brought up, and that is that I think it's not widely known, at least I did not know it, in studying this issue, that these devices, although they're intended to provide safety, they're limited in their ability to do that over a long period of time. And it is comforting to know we have smoke detectors in our homes and carbon monoxide sensors in our homes, and we tend to trust those and want to believe that that's providing elements of safety. The unfortunate thing is that they do wear out over time. They get dust inside them. Humidity affects them. The ability for the sensors to actually do their job is diminished over time. And so I'm not sure what things we can do as a county to encourage citizens to know that these are limited devices that need to be replaced once in a while. I do think there's a public safety issue that requires education in the community and personal responsibility for people to know that if your home wasn't built like mine was in 1991, that the sensors that are now, you know, the age that they are, may not be providing the best safety for my family. So it's important that I would take the time and the effort and the initiative and investment to change those sensors out, to make sure my family's being protected. So I think education's part of the key. And in fact, in that line, Mr. Stoltz, I was wondering, is part of the process here that we would provide educational handouts to, for the older homes and not new construction, for issues of roofs and that type of thing, would we hand them a paper educating them on carbon monoxide sensors? Is that the plan?
I think we can make a policy decision inside of our department to do just that. We just didn't want to tie it to the code. I also think that what will happen when this passes, this commission, and I have to go to city council on the June 9 meeting, that we will use this as a marketing tool to talk about some of the things we've discussed with carbon monoxide detectors and why we chose not to mandate them in existing homes, some of what you just mentioned. And I think we talk about that with the community. We have to notify all of the small municipalities that we're adopting new code. We'll use that opportunity to market there. So I think we have an opportunity here to bring it to the attention of people. And I've talked with both fire marshals, city and county, and we all agree that that education piece needs to be put out there. Fire is very diligent about smoke detectors, and they could easily add in some facet of carbon monoxide detector education as well.
You know, it's interesting that we do a mostly media blitz every daylight savings time clock change to change the batteries in your smoke detectors. Of course, many of these detectors are powered off of house wiring, so that's not necessarily valid in those cases. They may have battery backup, but some of these sensors today have batteries that last as many as, you know, seven to 10 years. And so changing batteries is not even possible in some of these units. It doesn't, they're not designed to have batteries replaced, which kind of drives the issue forward that they're time-limited. But we have what we call public safety announcements that happen on radio stations and TV stations and things like that. I just think the message ought to include the idea that if you have detectors that are older than five to seven years, you might want to consider investing in your family and replacing those as a matter of providing safety for them, because they're not to be trusted for 15 to 20 years, like I think most of us probably do. So I think that's part of the message and part of the education that I've gone through, and I appreciate the subject coming up to, I think, well, actually bring some safety to our community with better understanding and education efforts that are going out. So thank you, Mr. Stoltz.
Tom, thanks for all your efforts. And I know this has been an ongoing issue, and I'll take the time to talk a little bit. At a time when we're passing more regulations, I want to talk a little bit about deregulation with respect to the hoop houses. This is an issue that's come up a couple different times, and evidently it's a growing trend out in rural areas to do hoop houses, and sometimes it's related to agritourism, which is another issue that we're addressing here. And so I appreciate the willingness, take a look at that, and see if we really do need to regulate it. Because the more, you know, when we talk about economic development, one of the biggest things that a lot of businesses and developers and people are concerned about or have problems with is all the regulations. It seems to kind of slow down or inhibit economic development in many areas. And so we don't want to regulate things that we don't have to. And this hoop house issue is a perfect example of us taking an honest look at that and seeing if we really need to, and then coming to the conclusion that we don't need to. And I think that's, hopefully, we'll have more of that in the future. And I think, and I know when you guys go through this code here, you examine the code for those very same issues, too, to try and minimize the impact it has on everybody. So I appreciate all those efforts.
Thank you.
I don't believe, no, we do have, do we have a motion and a second?
We do.
Okay, keep me squared away. All right. Seeing no other comments, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransell?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next item, please.
Item M, consideration of a Sunflower Foundation grant in the amount of $200,000 for GraceMed at Comcare Integrated Care Implementation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marilyn Cook with Comcare. The item before you this morning is an exciting collaboration between Comcare, your community mental health center, and GraceMed, a fairly qualified health center in Wichita. GraceMed CEO Dave Sanford is here this morning. He'll be making some comments, and he also has a couple of his guild members here that he'll introduce when he comes up. The item is a grant award for $200,000 from the Sunflower Foundation to implement a primary care co-location site at one of Comcare's programs. We've known for some time that individuals with severe and persistent mental illness are dying 25 years before individuals without a mental illness. And the sad part is that they're dying of preventable illnesses. There's been a strong ten nationally to integrate primary care and behavioral health services with the goal of treating the whole person in one location. In 2012, Comcare and our partner GraceMed received a planning grant from the Sunflower Foundation to develop a plan for GraceMed to place a primary care provider in Comcare's outpatient program. It's been more common nationally to place therapists in primary care offices, but recent research showed that having what they call a reverse co-location model, such as the one that we'll be developing, has a significant impact on those with a serious mental illness that have physical health problems, that feel more comfortable receiving care where they've been receiving behavioral health services. During the planning phase, Comcare and GraceMed leaders visited Cherokee Health Systems in Knoxville, Tennessee, to learn how they develop their integrated program, and we worked with a consultant from Colorado who helped us in our planning stages. In 2014, you approved a remodel cost for the space in our outpatient program In 2014, you approved a remodel cost for the space in our outpatient program where the integrated program will be located. A contractor was awarded the renovation contract a couple weeks ago at this meeting, and the renovations to start soon and should be completed by late summer. The most significant modification to the space involves routing water to the exam rooms, which were once therapy offices. There'll be six exam rooms, a restroom, lab, nurses' station, financial office, reception area, and a shared space that encourages team consultation. In order to integrate even further, Comcare will place two of our medical providers in the space, two of our advanced nurse practitioners, in the space whose close proximity to GraceMed will promote curbside collaboration and eventually promote a smoother transition to the primary care clinic for patients who are stabilized on their medication, allowing our prescribers, who are specialists, to focus more on psychiatrically complex patients. The grant is going to be utilized to support two positions for two years. One will be a Comcare employee. We're calling this person a behavioral health consultant. And the other one will be a nurse practitioner employed by GraceMed. The grant money will be utilized, will pay 100% of the behavioral health consultant's salary and 25% of the benefits of the consultant, and it will help fund part of the one full-time GraceMed nurse practitioner that's going to be housed there, out working there. The behavioral health consultant that will be a Comcare employee will be a part of the GraceMed health team and will do short interventions in the exam rooms rather than having a therapy office, which was more traditional. I'd like to call Dave Sanford to come up here and share some comments before I state the recommended action and to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Marilyn, and good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here again. Like the introduced, as Marilyn said, two of our GraceMed Guild supporters, the Karens are here this morning, so we're happy to have them here. If you're not familiar with GraceMed, we're a faith-based community health center. Last year, we provided care for over 35,000 unduplicated patients in the greater Sedgwick County area through 84,000 patient visits. If you do the math, it's about 8% of the total population of the greater Wichita area. For years, we've been providing quality medical, dental, and vision services for the community, but the one thing we've lacked is providing behavioral health care. And we've had a great partnership with Comcare in terms of referring patients who experience the need for behavioral health services to Comcare. But we find that that is an obstacle to many people, and that nationwide, as Marilyn indicated, it is certainly being embraced to provide integrated holistic care for people when they're already at a single location. In our conversations with Marilyn, she indicated that there are over 2,000 current Comcare patients who do not have a primary care provider, and we're excited to provide that primary care experience for those folks at this integrated location over at Twin Lakes. Conversely, for the 35,000 unduplicated patients that we care for, many of those have certainly been identified to have mild or moderate behavioral health issues. And so this clinic, once it is open, will be available not only for Comcare patients but for the community at large. And so we're excited to have that opportunity to refer patients there. We certainly encourage you to adopt this opportunity to work with the Sunflower Foundation. Obviously, it's not federal funds. It's private foundational funds. Those are the things that we try to do in this community to collaborate with our partners to make sure that we're bringing available resources from various foundations into Wichita to make sure that we can improve the quality of life of those that live in this community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or return the microphone to Marilyn.
Thanks. I just want to make the recommended action. We recommend that you approve acceptance of the grant award and authorize the establishment of budget authority as provided in the financial consideration section of this request.
Commissioner Norton?
Sorry, I shut off my phone, so let me do that real quick. Just a few comments, and I'll be glad to make the motion. Over the years, I've been probably to several workshops and symposiums that talked about the best practices of integrating mental health and physical health and medical health together. And I'm going to be very supportive of this. You know, the question is, does mental health affect your physical health, or does physical health affect your mental health? And I think it's both. So this integration, not only in the clinics but in the mental health settings, is going to be vitally important to the best practices because co-location is... I guess they're not going to give up. I am very sorry. Throw it in the trash. This co-location is a best practice around the nation, and it... I think you're supposed to press the red button to get it to go off.
I was going to say, if it doesn't work, I'll just...
Okay. Very sorry. Usually, I leave that on the desk in my office. Co-location is a best practice, and I very much support that. From all the information and readings I've done over the years, this is going to be a powerful change in our community. And I'm glad that GraceMed, first of all, has expanded to serve so many uninsured in our community, but now will offer those kinds of services, including mental health. We know that oral health affects your physical health, and that's important, and now we have that component of mental health. So with that, I'll move that we take the recommended action today.
I'll second that motion. Mr. Chairman? If I may make some, add to the comments on this agenda item. Appreciate the overview in terms of where GraceMed is and at this point in time, and I, in light of Commissioner Norton's comments, I'm not sure which leads. You know, it's a chicken or egg situation in terms of which came first, and I'm not sure where it is, but I think this is a positive step forward today, and I'm happy to second this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. I noticed on the source of funding, there's a $200,000 grant. Is that a, is that for the two-year window? So it's $100,000 per year, is that?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. And it also mentions a required cash match, $43,979. That's a one-time expense, is that correct?
That's, that is the remainder of the benefits for the behavioral health consultant.
Okay, so...
For two years.
Okay, so that money is, we are approving additional budget authority for $43,979 today. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's not fee-funded or anything? It's coming from Sedgwick County?
It's coming from our grant fund.
All right. All right, now, you are hiring, going to be hiring two people?
We're going to be hiring a behavioral health consultant, who will really be a clinician, who will just use a different model. GraceMed will be hiring the other staff. He's going to be hiring an advanced nurse practitioner, a nurse to help with that practitioner, and then there is another staff member. I forget what they, the terminology, a patient service representative will be a staff member that GraceMed will be hiring. We are hiring just one.
And do you anticipate this grant would be something you'd reply for at the end of the, end of the two-year term?
We would hope so. I'll tell you, one of the things that is encouraging to me is that primary care integration has really become something that has been embraced nationally. And one of the issues that we have in terms of sustainability is, right now, Kansas only has two billing codes for behavioral health consultants. When we went to Cherokee, Cherokee and the folks from Knoxville worked with their state legislature and had eight codes that they are using. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and Secretary Moser from KDHE was interested in that, and she said, "Send me those codes, and we'll see if we can do something about making them codes that we will have access to as well." So we are working on billing codes, making them more accessible. And certainly, the Sunflower Foundation has primary care integration as a very big item that they have been supporting. So if the codes don't come through, we would probably ask for more funds if we don't make this sustainable on our own, and that would be our number-one goal.
So down the road, you hope this becomes something that's sustainable with others?
Yes.
Okay. That was one of my concerns was, we have a temporary funding stream for new services, which is great, that we have these services that we'll be providing. I'm just concerned about the temporary nature of the funding source, and so as long as that's part of the plan, I think that's really good. I do appreciate what GraceMed does in our communities. I think they're a great partner, again, with trying to provide medical services to the people who are, have disadvantaged issues, that they just need some extra help. And GraceMed's done a tremendous job in our communities of providing that. So appreciate them and look forward to seeing this be passed and implemented. Thank you very much.
Sure. I would add, in terms of the chicken and the egg question, Cherokee, who's been doing this work for well over 10 years, believes that there is a behavioral component to any illness. When you don't feel good physically, it affects how you function and how you feel emotionally. That could be from a cold. It could be from a chronic condition. So they treat everybody that comes in who has a physical concern that's going on. They inquire about how they are feeling emotionally, so, and they're very short interventions. It's not like they're sitting down for 15 minutes for a therapy appointment, but they believe there is a mental health component to almost any physical health issue, certainly the chronic ones.
What's the will of the board?
We, we have a motion in a second.
We do.
I think we know the will, or we will soon. Okay, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransough?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item N, consideration of a grant application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment in the amount of $146,895 for supporting accelerated local public health preparedness, planning, and operational readiness, and for responding to Ebola through the Sedgwick County Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burnletz, Health Director. Before you, is supplemental funding from Kansas Department of Health and Environment in the amount of $146,895. Now, this funding is to assure and improve operational readiness for an Ebola-type event. This funding historically is directed to local health departments. We had public health emergency preparedness as part of the health department until May 3rd, when it merged, consolidated with our emergency management in Sedgwick County and is now emergency communications and management. So this funding will come to the health department, pass through us, and go to emergency communications and management. The desired use of that money is to replace the expired personal protective equipment that we have in three or four trailers in designated areas in Sedgwick County. This personal protective equipment would be for our first responders to use. Our first responders do have their own personal protective equipment for, to be able to respond immediately, but this equipment would be able to sustain them if they needed to be, continue to be active in an Ebola-type event. I ask that you approve the application of the grant, authorize the chairman to sign, and any other recommendations. I'll be glad to take, answer any questions.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we take the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Peter John?
Yes, let me just ask at this point in time, is this part of a nationwide effort? Are these grants going out all across the country, or is this just within the state of Kansas? Or can you, any idea in terms of how broad the scope is? Because this kind of, the whole Ebola issue kind of popped up unexpectedly, and then there was a lot of news about it, and then all of a sudden, it's gotten really, really quiet. I think it would be helpful to at least get some idea in terms of where we stand at this point from an epidemiological perspective.
Well, this is pass-through money from the Department of Health and Human Services, and it is targeting local health departments, and it is expanded way beyond Kansas. And so this money is available to, if not all states, most states.
Okay. Do we have any, are there any cases? Let me rephrase this. I haven't heard of any cases in the United States recently. Are you aware of any?
No.
In the last, this month or last month?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't, Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, I was just curious, can you tell me how long does this PPE equipment last once it's been utilized? So there was, say, an event happens locally and someone uses their own that they currently have access to, how much time do they have before they have to have replacement equipment?
Well, much of this equipment, from my understanding, is one-time use. And now, the gas masks, for example, now themselves wouldn't be, but the filters, the canisters that go on the gas masks to filter whatever agent that they may be dealing with, those are going to be one-time use and have to be replaced.
Right, but it's like eight hours or something? What's the, how much time do they have to have before they have to have something changed to allow them to continue?
I don't have that information, but I will get that for you.
Okay. I don't have any problem with the, applying for this grant, although I don't know that this is, I guess, if we had an Ebola event locally, I think there's going to be a lot of equipment in our community across the state and maybe other states that would be available to be located quickly to the place that it's needed. We don't have a large outbreak and widespread issues that happen all at the same time. Nevertheless, I guess I understand this equipment already exists and it's already basically out of date, and that's the point that you think you're making today. This is, would replace expiring equipment that's already in our possession, so...
That is correct.
Okay, for that extent, I would support the grant, although I don't know that I agree with the idea that we would have a, an emergency, trying to find equipment in the area that would be able to be utilized should an event happen, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransough?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item O, consideration of a Kansas Department of Corrections Grant application in the amount of $837,781 to strengthen probation supervision, community safety, and client success by increasing behavioral interventions proven to reduce recidivism with adult felony offenders.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Masterson, Corrections Department. As you know, Community Corrections is a state-mandated program in the adult correction system. It's an intensive probation that provides felony offenders the chance to avoid prison under strict conditions set by the court while they maintain employment, pay taxes, pay restitution to crime victims, and continue to support their families. The Community Corrections Program is state-funded through an annual grant process administered by the Department of Corrections, KDOC. The state legislature also provides funding for community corrections through the Justice Reinvestment Initiative. Sedgwick County has received awards for these funds since November 2013. The grant application before you today is for state fiscal year '16. These funds support behavioral health interventions and evidence-based programming to reduce recidivism and reduce probation revocations where they go to prison. We are requesting funds to continue the current services that we receive, and I provided in here an option for expansion to deliver programming deeper within our population. The current behavioral health interventions are provided by three separate agencies, with Community Corrections serving as the lead. We have a contract with Comcare for specialized intervention, for a specialized intervention team to provide a variety of mental health services that you've just heard Marilyn talk about that are co-located and integrated at Community Corrections around behavioral health. We have a contract with Higher Ground, a licensed substance abuse agency, to provide recovery services and intensive support and mentoring to high-risk clients while they're engaged... engaged in substance abuse treatment, and that continues for the duration of their term to support them of completing probation, as do the mental health services. So, that's a significant advantage to help our clients make it through the probation term. Community Corrections, my part of it, also provides research-based cognitive behavioral programming to address criminal thinking values and attitudes. We use a group model for that. We target the highest-risk persons that are predictive of committing new crimes while they're on probation and after. And, so at any rate, through these collaborative and integrated services, we're starting to see an increase in client success. Have been doing them, the grant came out and was issued in November of 2013, and this grant cycle, this puts this on a state fiscal year cycle and for a 12-month period. But, we're starting to see success in that. The jury's still out on if it'll reduce prison beds, but 72% of our population that's receiving these services have either completed successfully, or they're still successful on probation, receiving the services. So, the preliminary results look like this is a positive thing. The research would say this is definitely the thing to do. What I included here, that is a request for the current services, which is a little under $590,000 for state fiscal year 16, and an enhancement request to add four program providers to my staff to provide, expand the number of groups we provide, and do them, more clients deeper, more clients will receive these services that are currently in our program. And, so the grant provides, if approved and the enhancement was approved, that's an additional $248,000 and change. The total request is $837,781. And, so it gives the state two options. There's $3 million if the state budget passes as it is today for these funds. They are targeted to areas, they're not distributed evenly across the state, they're targeted to areas where you can have the most impact on public safety and reducing the prison population. The advisory, your Community Corrections Advisory Board has approved this and recommends that you approve it, as do I. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we take the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, you were kind enough to brief me on this, and I'm glad to see this getting on a 12-month basis, and I appreciate your explanation and do plan to be supportive this morning. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next item, please.
Item P, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts' regular meeting on May 14, 2015.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. Meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on May 14th results in six items that we're presenting to you this morning. Item number one is the CHFRS 2P emulsified asphalt for Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions Incorporated for an initial purchase of $199,640 and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number two is the 2015 SuperSeal Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the bid from Andale Ready Mix Central Incorporated in the amount of $1,451,561.72. Item number three is the MS1 emulsified oil for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions Incorporated, and this is for an initial purchase of $159,750 and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number four is the City Surface Mix for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the bid from APAC Kansas Incorporated Shears Division for an initial purchase of $96,500 and establish contract pricing for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number five is the Dodge Charger Police Package Vehicles for Fleet Management. The recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Landmark Dodge in the amount of $398,980. And item number six is the ergonomic task chairs for Facilities Department and Risk Management. This recommendation is to accept the proposals from Midwest Single Source for the Han Highback Task Chair, Contract Furnishings for their Global Vion Mesh Back Task Chair, Scott Rice Office Interiors for the Steel Case Leap Task Chair, Johnny Marshall Company for the Herman Miller Mira II Task Chair, and to establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thank you. Dave Spears, I have a question on the SuperSeal. How many miles is that for?
That is for four miles.
Is the price going up on that?
Commissioner Ransall, we broke that down. There are some other things involved in that, which includes micro-cracking of the SuperSeal this year, so that we can eliminate the big cracks, and it's something that we've looked into. So, that's included in there. And also, the sealing, we do the sealing, but then there's a fog seal we put over, and it's called HA5, and it is another $33,000 per mile, and that's in there. And then, the markings for striping is in there, and that's another $6,000 per mile. But, overall, I do believe the price is going up. You look at the SuperSeal alone with the micro-cracking, and it's $277,000 per mile.
But, this is the only vendor that does this at this time?
In this area. It's done by vendors worldwide, but right now, this is the only vendor in this area.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you. Similar questions to the Director of Public Works, if I could. So, would it be safe to say that for a two-lane road, the cost, the SuperSeal's about $320,000 per mile, excluding the, those extra costs that you added in, I think was $33,000 and $6,000 per, and that's for two lanes?
Well, I have $277,000 per mile.
Okay. Can you walk through, walk me through those numbers again? Because I'm just, I'm trying to, I thought you said it was $33,000 for the.
It is. It's $277,000 for the SuperSeal for Andale, including the micro-cracking, another $33,000 for the fog seal on top of that, which is a different process, and then $6,000 per mile for the markings.
Okay. But, I'm looking at, the total on this bids, just over $1,451,000 for four miles. And so, I divided that, came up with about $363,000 per mile. Is it, what did I do wrong with my numbers?
You may, there are other, if I had the.
Are there some other costs in there?
Any other items in there?
Because I'm, had the same sort of questions that the chairman had in terms of.
Right. I, this is all the breakdown I have. There may be other items in there also, but I'll just, I'll have to get back to you on that, but.
Okay.
I can't think of what they are right now off the top of my head.
Because I noticed on several of these, we only had, you know, one or two bids, and that's always a concern. And I broaden that comment to Mr. Thomas, as well as yourself, obviously, but if there's only one, there is only one, and I knew that was the case on the SuperSeal, but do want to get additional information on that. Thank you.
What's the will of the board? I move that we approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts. I'll second that. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransall?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda before you, and I recommend you approve it.
What's the will of the board? I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransall?
Aye.
We're now to the legislative issues portion of the agenda, and the only thing to bring up there is the addition of Senator Donovan's tax plan that has, it's been percolating along, but as of yesterday, it's actually been thrown in the mix, and I think we're all aware of that, so. Commissioner Unruh? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we, are we going to have our legislative representative prepare some testimony, or are we going to make an effort about it, trying to illustrate how this might impact us? I mean, if we haven't given that instruction, I mean, would you do that? Yes, they already are. And they have. I mean, I hadn't seen testimony, but. Well, I mean, they're working the issue. If the time comes that they can provide testimony, then they'll do that, but they are communicating with legislators. Our. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions on legislative issues? Mr. Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to comment because, and follow up on some earlier comments, we had particularly, relating to contacting legislators, because I've spent a lot of time in the last couple weeks, because I've been very much concerned about this Senate tax proposal that was in Senate Bill 259, and I appreciate the information that I've been able to get, and I have been in touch with Jason Watkins, who is helping us on the legislative side of things, and I've been calling a lot of legislators, and I urge everyone who has a concern about their county property taxes to make sure they first get informed, and if they, after they get informed, want to pass the information along. I won't walk through the data that I provided earlier in terms of the two bills, and the version I've got is with Senate Bill 259. I'm not sure exactly how the implementation would work on House Bill 2109 that was included in the, that included Senate Bill 259, as I understand, in some form, was added to the tax package yesterday. But, I think it could have a severe impact on not only Sedgwick County, but the other 104 counties in the state. I gave some numbers for some of the cities, but I think would affect every municipality in the state of Kansas. And also, I've been told that it would affect townships and other property tax-receiving entities that are out there, too. I don't know of any in Sedgwick County that jump out at me, but we've got 26 townships, I believe, that are active at this point in time, and they'd all, they'd all take a hit also. So, this legislation has some very important moving parts. I think it would be very negative for Sedgwick County in particular, and of course, my concern is what's after this, and obviously, getting more information on it. The problem at this time of year is there aren't a lot of formal legislative hearings with testimony. There's often meetings at the rail, committees meet at the rail, and I defer to Commissioner Howell, who's had a lot more legislative experience directly, hands-on, than I've had, but I've certainly seen the process in place, and it's certainly one that concerns me very much going forward, and I urge all of my colleagues who have influence with the legislators to make sure that every member of the South Central delegation knows where we stand on this and any other issues that could impact county, both county revenues as well as mandates for county spending. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just continue those comments and add to them just a little bit. At this point, this point in the legislative session, the committees really are not meeting at a committee level. There is a conference committee that meets, really just the three leaders, three leaders of each committee from the House and the Senate, when they get together and put different proposals into the, into the package, and they send it to both floors for consideration. At that point, it's really not amendable on the floor. It's just going to be an up or down vote on each body, and once both bodies agree, then that becomes the solution to the revenue needs of the state. Having said that, our opportunity really is on an individual level, communicating with each legislator independently. It's really our best, our best strategy, so emails and phone calls to them, or even a visit to their office would be, would be very beneficial. I'd like to describe this bill just briefly, what Senate Bill 259 would do. It would lower revenues to local governments across the state by about $179 million. Our portion of the state is about, Sedgwick County represents about 1/6 of the state, so roughly $30 million, so that would be governmental units within Sedgwick County. Of that, about 7.5, maybe even up to $8 million would be Sedgwick County government itself. And so, if we're going to continue to provide services that are needed by the community, $8 million change to our revenue stream would be, would be a significant change. So, I would agree with legislators that property taxes on vehicles in Kansas is too high, and probably should be something that should be changed at some point in the future. This may not be the best time. I think politically, there's an, there's an argument to be made that they're raising taxes potentially to close the budget shortfall for the state, and politically, doesn't sound so bad when you're lowering property taxes someplace else. If you look at those things side by side, you might say it's a wash, or maybe not, doesn't feel quite as bad if you're lowering property taxes in one area and raising taxes in some other area. So, politically, it may be an easier sell this year to include Senate Bill 259 language into the final solution. And on top of that, they'd be adding $43 million for education, for schools, and that's always popular. So, I think politically, this proposal in Topeka has a serious likelihood of passing this year, and should it pass, would be a $30 million reduction of revenue for our county overall, and about $8 million for Sedgwick County government. And that's certainly going to have an impact on the services that we can provide, or I guess the other option, of course, is to shift that burden to other sources of revenue for the county, which would be property taxes. I don't think that's likely to happen either, considering our state of this economy. So, I just think with that explanation, this is the time for us to advocate to our legislators, this is certainly an interesting issue that needs to be fixed, but maybe this is the right time to do that. And so, I encourage them to not include that language into this proposal. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move to the other portion of our agenda. Commissioners, do you have anything for the other portion? Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of, I'd like to provide a little bit of a report in terms of some important activities that have been going on here in Sedgwick County. There were four meetings, I think most of them were conducted last week. The one I attended was May 13th out at the extension office, considering the new floodplain maps that are out there, and if folks are interested or have a concern in terms of their property, that continues to be an issue. Those are in the process of being finalized. We did have public meetings, but if folks were unable to attend those, I know there are both federal as well as county folks who, we can get information on that and get in touch on that issue. I would also like to mention that on May 15th, I participated, and several of my colleagues here participated in the law enforcement memorial program to honor the 29 law enforcement officers from four different agencies who have given their lives here in Sedgwick County. And that was an event, the Chairman Ransall and Vice Mayor Clendenin both spoke, and a number, number of elected officials were present to honor those 29 officers and the departments. And I think that's very important at this point in time with the continuing controversies out here of the law enforcement folks who are working to keep us safe, and I think that's an important event that deserves as much attention as we can provide it. Also, I'd like to report, and this is, was a fun event for me. It's the first time I've had the opportunity to do it. Last night, I was participating in the Wichita Area Technical College National Center for Aviation Training graduation, and there were close to 200 students were, went through the graduation process, and that was a very positive event here in this community. I'd also be remiss, Mr. Chairman, if I didn't mention, May 20th is an important day in American history. First, I'd like to point out, sometimes discussions about. First, I'd like to point out, sometimes discussions about unintended consequences, and arguably, one of the most unintended consequences that have been monumental in our history occurred on May 20th, 1506. Christopher Columbus died in Spain, still believing that his journeys into the Western Hemisphere were actually, he actually had discovered the east coast of Asia. Of course, he hadn't, but it had huge consequences for the future going forward. May 20th was also an important day in American technology. In 1873, Levi Strauss received his patent for his denim pants with copper rivets. In 1899, taxi driver by the name of Jacob German became the first driver to be arrested for speeding. He was going 12 miles per hour on Lexington Avenue in New York City. But probably two most important events that have a direct connection here with Wichita. On this date, May 20th, 1927, Charles Lindbergh took off from an airfield on Long Island, Roosevelt Field, and flew into history, landing more than a day later, thirty-three and a half hours later, to be a little bit more exact, at La Bergeré Airfield in Paris. And to show you how fast the technology was moving at that time, on May 20th, 1939, regular transatlantic air mail service began with the flight of the Pan Am Clipper from Port Washington, New York, to Lisbon, Portugal. So May 20th was an important day in American history. Wanted to provide that for the record, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Enru?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a moment to give a shout out to Mount Hope Mayor, Mayor Terry Summers. He was recently elected as the 2015 Mayor of the Year by the Kansas Mayors Association, and my relationship with Mayor Summers is through the Regional Economic Area Partnership, where he's served on the Executive Committee for many years, but Mayor Summers is a good guy, and wanted to recognize him and say congratulations. That's all I have.
Okay. We do have need for a fire agenda. I guess we will recess the regular meetings in Sedgwick County Commissioners. A called order, meeting of the BOCC as a governed body of Fire District One for May 20th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item?
Roll call. Commissioner Enru?
Present.
Commissioner Norton?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Present.
Chairman Ransaw?
Present.
Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular fire meeting minutes of February 4th, 2015. All Commissioners were present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if we can combine A, B, and C for the meeting minutes of February 4th, February 18th, and March 4th, 2015, I'm going to make that motion. That's accepted.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
Next item?
Donations, INMD, acceptance of a donation from Air Products and Chemicals.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Larry Teng, Sedgwick County Fire Department Deputy Chief. The Fire District recently received a $5,000 donation from Air Products and Chemicals located at 6601 South Ridge Road. This is a continuation of their advocacy for the Fire District and public safety in our region, and we'd like to recommend that you accept this donation.
Commissioner Peter John?
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the donation of $5,000 and authorize the chairman to sign a letter of appreciation to Air Products and Chemicals.
And I'll second that motion and say we appreciate very much their donation, their willingness to support the Fire District.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
Anything else to come before the Fire District? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting of the governed body of the Fire District and call the regular meeting of the city county commissioners back to order, and we're next in line in executive session. Commissioner Peter John?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes to consider consultation with legal counsels on matters privileged in the attorney-client relationship relating to legal advice and preliminary discussions relating to acquisition of real property for public purposes, and the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 11:45 a.m.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll, or call the vote.
Commissioner Enru?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
We'll now move to executive session.